Good morning. My name is Mo Degani and I am the chancellor at Missouri S&amp;T. I am delighted to welcome you to our second town hall meeting. Our first one that was held two weeks ago had over 700 people in attendance. We had great questions. We answered some of the questions. We responded to all of the questions, whether live or through the communication channels. And I just wanted to start today first by thanking all of you, our students, faculty, and staff, for having endured this strange and unusual situation that we are in. But hang in there, there are signs of improvements, as you've been hearing from the national news and all of that. I was frankly delighted this morning to hear on public radio that there are nine states that have less than 1,000 cases and their rate has been less than 30 a day. So they are going to be considering a different approach and maybe lightening some of the situations, but we are not in that case. So hang in there with us and things will improve. The fact is that we are on the down slope of everything, but we still have a long time to go before we get to the clear. I also want to remind us that the city of Rolla issued a state-at-home ordinance which is in effect until May 11. So we encourage you to adhere to the details of that policy and maintain the social distance as you have been to the fullest extent. To protect our employees, the student and faculty, as you know, majority of our employees are working at home and those that are deemed necessary to be here on campus are adhering to the social distance rules to the extreme levels. I would like to thank all of you, all of you, for helping us, for helping the university and our community. I am also delighted to let you know that our city, our campus, the Phillips County, hasn't had a case, yet there is one case that's in question, but that person lives in another county. And our surrounding counties have been healthy as well. So that's a delightful news for us and we like to keep it that way. And everything that we do between now and the fall semester is with all of that in mind. Our campus is healthy, the city is healthy, and we like to maintain that status for as long as we can and hopefully until this whole thing is blown by us. Let me also mention that I am joined today by four of our campus leaders. Dr. Steve Roberts, our provost, is sitting to my left. Dr. Dennis Goodman, the director of our student health and S&amp;T's chief medical officer, is sitting to the far right. And Ms. Cuba Plain, our vice chancellor for finance and operations, is sitting to my right. And then our director of marketing and communication, Andy Carriega, is sitting to far left. And we are all here to answer any questions that you may have. We will try to answer as many questions as we can through this setting, but as you can imagine, there'll be many, many questions that we will not be able to answer in this short time period that we have in front of you. But we will try to answer every question that we get, one way or another. And if you have any questions during this broadcast, make sure to use your Q&amp;A function in Zoom to pose the question to us and our moderators will compile them and we will try to answer as many of them as we can. So with that said, let me try to answer some of the questions. We've received questions. We receive questions all the time through different channels. I get a lot of email questions. I get phone calls. Everybody else does and so on and so forth. So we have a series of these questions that I'd like to answer or respond to and ask my colleagues here to respond to as we move forward. A question that has gained a lot of attention is our arrangement with Phelps Health. As you know, we have a very close relationship with health medical. They are here to help the community, the state, the county, and they've done a remarkable job. Our relationship with them has multiple dimensions. One dimension, as you know, is the fact that we use every capability that we had and we have on campus to 3D print masks and face shields. And that relationship is going great and we've delivered already some 2,000 masks and face shields and we are in the process to improving that process. And I was delighted to know that because that news got out, a lot of our affiliated entities, whether they were our alums, companies that we interact with, and so on and so forth, they have come forth and they have stated their willingness to support the medical community, the first responder communities, and that dynamic is going very well. In fact, we have shared our designs, which are very much sought after, with companies and nonprofit organizations who have the capabilities of printing many, many more of these than we do in our laboratories. So we have multiple dimensional relationship with Phelps Health. And one request that came from them was that due to the long hours that hospital staff work at our location here, they needed facilities for the hospital staff to stay overnight since they have very little time for rest and they work long hours. Frankly, I know that feeling personally. My wife, my own wife, is a clinician and she's been doing 14, 15-hour shifts and she just drives back home and, you know, takes a shower and rests and eats and goes back. So I fully understand that need. And I am delighted to let you know that we have come up with an agreement with Phelps Health that can use some of our residential facilities for their staff to stay overnight and get ready for their next shift. Our agreement is a multi-stage agreement, but ultimately it will be till mid-July and we will not have anything to do with our facilities. They will take care of it. They will maintain it. And in fact, it is, I believe, a very good service that the university can provide to Phelps Health and to the community. The second question had to do with budget concerns. As you know, President Choi indicated that in the coming weeks and months, there will be organizational change as well as consolidation of programs in the U M system. The question is, what processes will be used to make these decisions? So let me highlight some of the activities that have been going. At the campus level, the entirety of the cabinet membership have agreed to a 10% salary reduction to help the budgetary situation. I don't need to tell you that we have, we've been hit hard because of the situation and our budget has really frankly never seen a spin like this. But we have returned a portion of the dormitory fees, of the meal plans, and that budget alone constitutes somewhere between $3 and $4 million of hit that we have to absorb. So and then there are many, many other things. I mean, the fact that we went online, our entire curriculum is online, as you know, and as you also know, that has been going incredibly well, as testimony from our students and our faculty and everybody highlights the fact that it is going very well. So we are delivering our curriculum online. Research is going on to the extent that we can, that are not laboratory dependent, and so on and so forth. Nonetheless, we have a major budget issue that we need to address. I just highlighted the fact that our cabinet members and some of our senior staff members have agreed to a 10% salary reduction to address that. In addition to that, we are doing contingency plannings at 10%, 15%, 20%. What if we get to the point where we need to reduce our budget by 10% or 15% or 20% and so on and so forth? We are also relying, we have 30-plus members of our faculty that are retirement eligible. This morning, I received an email from one of our faculty members that's retirement-eligible and this person said to me that, look, even though I was planning to work for another year, I understand the situation. I have enough years and I will retire soon. Well, as you can imagine, these are sort of a dichotomous situation. We are grateful for their service and we want their service, but if there are elements that we can utilize in order to reduce our budget dependency, that'll be great. So that's one area that we are focused on. Another area is that we are hoping that our revenue stream will continue, not from the state. Again, I have to let you know that for the last quarter of this year, the three months that we are in right now, the state is withholding their budget to the tune of $4-plus million. So that's immediate, $4-plus million of revenue that we are not getting. But I am delighted to let you know that despite all of this, our deposited enrollment students, we are ahead of where we were last year at this time. So I'd like to take the opportunity to tell all of those who are sitting waiting to see what is going to happen. Fall semester will be here. All indications are that the campus will get back to the new normal. We will have classes on campus. So if you are one of those accepted students and you intend to attend Missouri S&amp;T, please get back with us. Please go through the process. As I mentioned the last time, don't let the stress of the moment interfere with your long-term plans. You know that this thing will be over with. You know, two years from today, we will look back and we'll say, well, that was a difficult period. But don't let the stress of the moment interfere with your longer-term career plan. You've already made the decision to apply for S&amp;T. If you are accepted to this esteemed university, go through the process and complete your process. I also want to reach out to our enrolled students. You know, freshmen, sophomores, and juniors and so on and so forth. And if you have not enrolled for the next fall semester, contact your advisor. The advisors are in the process of contacting you, so please complete that process as well. But getting back to the measures that we are going to have to have in place in order to address our budget shortfalls. I mentioned the contingency plans. There were some measures announced last month, and these include restrictions on hiring or we are hardly hiring anybody unless, unless if there is a position that we don't hire, something bigger will break. As I mentioned the last time, we are putting all of our hirings on hold. That does not mean that we will not hire. There are some areas that are investment areas. And even during these times, we need to be able to invest in those areas and we are moving forward with those areas. But by and large, hiring is on hold. And then we are cutting back on expenses such as travel. No travel will happen between now until the further announcement that we don't know where that will be. So all of these measures are in place, in effect, and they are indeed helping us with our budget situations. And I will also have to let you know that within that 10%, 15%, 20% contingency plan, we may have to resort to consideration of layoffs and unpaid leaves and most importantly, the restructuring of the university. We have, as we speak, we have committees that are working on three very important areas for the future of the campus. You know, we have to at all times be planning for the new future, what that new future will be. And the new future will be a combination of on-campus, in-person, online, distant learning, graduate programs, new programs, and all of those. So we are in planning stages. There are three committees hard at work. One is the entirety of our enrollment management. How do we, how do we reach out to broader potential applicants beyond our own borders within the state of Missouri? You know, I don't have to tell you that Missouri S&amp;T is truly the crown jewel of engineering and science education in the state of Missouri and in the country. So we are in all of these planning stages, planning programs, planning activities that we are going through. Our intent is, how do we take this wonderful university to a broader set of potential students for our programs? In that light, we are creating new programs, including our global engineering programs that if you don't know about, you should get on the website and read about it. But we are planning for a broader, more engaged enrollment management at the undergraduate level, a revamping of our graduate enrollment processes and programs, and then third, our online education. We have sharpened our tools during this process and we need to continue doing that and come up with strategies that we can deliver our programs online and as I said, on-campus, in-person. And we have to be multimodal going into the future in delivering our programs. So we have that in place. A fourth activity that is ongoing as well, which actually started before this, all of this new era that we are in, is our research, innovation, and entrepreneurship. I am delighted to let you know that there is a committee working hard at that as well because we want our research to flourish and we want the result of research to spill over our borders and into the community and support the state's economic development that is so badly needed. I also would like to let you know that we will make an announcement that we like to have a longer-term strategy for this wonderful university. How do we, how do we get ourselves to a point where fluctuations in our budget is not a do-or-die situation for the campus? I have to tell you that based on my own personal experience, there are many universities that are highly, highly ranked and do not receive a dime of support from their estates. We need to learn a lesson from those campuses. How do they package their programs? How do they deliver their programs? If you look at the top 50 U.S. News and World Report universities that are ranked at that level, you will find that great majority of them are private universities. We need to learn a lesson or two from them and plan our activities for our future. What should Missouri S&amp;T of 2040 look like? So we will not be so susceptible to fluctuations of any of our funding revenues. Where do we need to be? Where do we need to be five years from today to be ready for 20 years from today? Where do we need to be 10 years from today to be ready for that 2040 campus, which is much more financially robust and competes with anyone everywhere? So stay tuned with that as well. So there are many, many planning programs in place and if there is any silver lining in all of this, is the fact that we are now on alert and we don't want to be in this situation ever again. So multimodal program delivery, new program creations, identification of broader set of applicants for our programs, and reaching out to them. As I mentioned, enrollment management strategies, both at undergraduate level and graduate level, and our research, innovation, and entrepreneurship. Let me quickly move on to the next question that has been asked of us. And that has to do with NextGen. The question is, we were asked if the NextGen project is moving forward? And the answer is, of course, yes. NextGen is needed today more than ever. Imagine if we could develop rapid result tests? If we could test everybody? I'm always reminded that I don't know how many tens of millions of people in this country alone test themselves for diabetes and they get their results instantaneously. That is purely in the domain of programs such as NextGen. So the answer to that question is yes. And if there was ever a situation that proved the need for programs such as NextGen, this is it. All four of our public campuses, public university campuses, are working shoulder to will to advance the objectives of NextGen and we will continue doing that moving forward. Several students have asked about discounts for various services. I think I just mentioned to you that there are some major elements. I mentioned refunds for the housing, refunds for the meal plans, and so on. But I'd like to defer this question to our chief financial officer, Ms. Cuba Plain. And Cuba, if you could please provide some details.
Yes, sir. As the chancellor has already discussed, our educational activities and engagement with our students is continuing. And it's continuing at many different levels and in many different ways, although be it from a distance. And because those activities are continuing and the costs associated with those activities are all continuing, in fact, in many cases have increased, there will not be a refund or a discount against any of the academic tuition and fees. Technology fees are being stretched to the maximum with all of the additional services that are being provided to our students. And with regard to the activity and facility fees, we have done an in-depth analysis of those and have gone over those with our student body council and have gone through those one by one. Most of the fees that are in that group are, the distribution of them is done by the students or they go for debt services. And so we've, most of the fees that are there are, the expenses are continuing. For example, with the health service fee, we are continuing all of our health services. Many of those have gone online, our wellness and mental health, all of those things continue. They just continue in a virtual environment or physically on campus for those students that are in the area. The only fee in question was about, related to the rec center. We went over those budgets in detail and visited with the student body council about that. Most of that fee goes to pay for debt service on the new fitness center and a little bit left, the final on the recreation center. There was a small amount of money that would have been spent for operating expenses during the six-to-seven week period when that facility was closed. We evaluated that and based upon recommendations from the students, they have voted to carry that money forward into next year to offset debt service and operating expenses in the future. So with that regard, the only credits that will be received by our students for this year are related to housing and dining and those credits, all of the students who were participating in those plans have received individual letters and those credits will appear on their bills. And then the others will not, there will be no discounts or credits for other fees.
Thank you, Cuba. Let me, let me take this opportunity and thank a number of alums who have reached out to us and expressed their willingness to provide assistance to the university through financial support and so on. I am grateful to all of them. There have been a number of alarms and I'd like to highlight the fact that we have established a minor resilience fund. You can contribute to that fund if you want, but more importantly, for the students that may need assistance during these hard times, I'd like to let you know that that fund is available. It's not much, but hopefully it will grow. But there are many, many other programs that are in the making. The nature of these programs, their policies, their conditions continue to evolve. Some of them are at the stages of implementation. Some of them are in the decision-making processes and some of them, some of the big ones are in the, what I like to call, in the thinking about, thinking about stages. But I encourage you, if you have a need for financial assistance, reach out to us. Reach out to our enrollment management. Reach out to our financial aid office. Ask and then they'll be able to tell you what programs are available in support of what activities. But do not, do not not reach us. Make sure that if there is a need and, in fact, if there is something that is preventing you from continuing your education, please, please reach out to us. As I said, there are programs. Some of them are, you know, at the federal level, state level, and some of it are our own level that we can, we can help. Again, our student aids office will be, will have all the information about all the programs that are available, scholarships, fellowships, you know, and downright just support for the students. Reach out to them as well. Let me, let me also at this point, thank all of you and let you know that I understand, we all understand that this is, this is an era of uncertainty. But there are, even in these areas, in these eras, there are functions that we can perform and perform well. The worst thing that we can do is resort to our negativity. As I've said many times, this country, this university has seen adverse conditions over its 150 years of history. Previous generations mean at least on two, three occasions were asked to put their education on hold and go to war. That was the case in World War I. That was the case in World War II. We are simply asked to go home and work from home. Now, I don't want to minimize that. Of course, that's been a strain, a stress on all of us. But tomorrow we will have a speaker. Sandy Magnus, who's going to be talking to us, and I encourage you to tune in. Andy, what time is that presentation tomorrow?
That presentation is at 2:00 P.M., I believe.
Okay, 2:00 P.M. I think that presentation has a very relevant dimension to what we are doing today. And that is the fact that Sandy spent an elongated period of time, months, I want to say it was four months or six months, four months in isolation in space aboard one spaceship. So given that condition, yes, it is difficult now, but we still can move about. We still can get in our cars and drive places. We still can connect with our friends easily. You know, communication is free essentially, phone and Zoom and all of that, and computation is free. So you can use your computational devices, your communication devices, and communicate with the rest of us. And I encourage you to do that. If you have questions, ask. My email address is mo@msd.edu. You can't get it any easier than that. And I will be delighted to respond to your questions. So with that, I'll stop here and I'll ask Andy to read off other questions that may have come in during this past 45 minutes or so.
Thank you, Chancellor Dagani. We have had quite a few submissions of questions so far this morning. One of the first ones that we received has to do with whether or not the university is saving money from the remote work arrangement, and also if there is any federal aid that we will be receiving as a result of the CARES Act, the federal stimulus project. So that might be a question for Vice Chancellor Plane?
Let me just, yes, yes. I will defer to Cuba in a moment. But I just wanted to say that working remotely was never about saving money. We have two dimensions to consider here. One is staying healthy, and then the other is economic and budgetary considerations. I just wanted to put that on the table so you'll be aware that not everything that we do is budget-related. And then I'll leave the details to Cuba to help us out.
Thank you, Chancellor. The working from home and teleworking has not saved the institution money. That was not its purpose. But the other cost-saving measures that were put into place at the same time that we began to work remotely have generated cost savings. Those include travel bans and delays of purchases, equipment. All of those kinds of things have reduced in cash savings, and that will help to offset our cash shortages that we have to find for this, the remainder of this fiscal year.
Thank you, Cuba. The next question has to do with the plans for the fall and the fall semester. What are the plans for the fall semester? And will there be online courses, additional online options, as well as in-person options? What does that look like? And perhaps Provost Roberts should address that?
Sure, I'm happy to take that question. This is, how universities open back up for on-campus instruction, on-campus learning, and on-campus work is a national discussion right now. And right now, for S&amp;T, we are having those conversations in consultation with the Missouri Department of Higher Education and Workforce Development, in consultation with the UM system, and in consultation with our healthcare community. What I can tell you is that it probably won't look like the opening of fall semesters that we have seen in the past. There will be different dimensions. No one knows exactly what they are, but they could include on-campus learning with a greater degree of social distancing. It could involve a greater reliance on certain classroom approaches, such as flipped courses, or hybrid delivery, or significant portions of online delivery. Make no mistake, though, there is no university that is better recognized for an hands-on residential, experiential learning domain than Missouri S&amp;T. And we will be certain that that basic DNA continues to drive our decision-making and the experience that we provide to learners.
Great, very good. Thank you, Steve. The next question may be for a few of our panelists here, but it has to do with contingency planning for deep budget cuts, as Chancellor Dagani has mentioned. Question really pertains to, what are the contingency plans for a crisis of this magnitude? And why have there been no contingency plans in that, you know, for this in the past? After 2015, the question was specific about some cuts that were made at that time, so.
So first of all, I think that's a very good question. My immediate thoughts are that we should have contingency plans. But we did. We had a contingency plan last year at this very time. In fact, because of the enrollment decrease that happened, you know, and it was the case across the country, we had a similar budget cut situation last year, and we implemented it. To the question of what are the contingency plans, every unit of the organization is looking at their real situation, real time today. And they are considering, as I mentioned, the 10%, 15%, 20%. As you can imagine, as you go up the scale, it becomes increasingly difficult. 20% is cutting to the bone. We don't have that much fat. But nonetheless, we need to come up with contingency plannings, and we are, we will. Again, I want to remind us that there are units within the organization that the contingency plan for them might in fact mean increasing their budget. That is, for example, our enrollment management, our marketing activities, our, you know, development activities, our educational activities. Our priority during these contingency planning processes is number one, to maintain our educational core. How do we develop new programs? How do we deliver the new programs? It might be multimodal, as the provost just mentioned. But our number one priority is developing and delivering our educational program. Everything else, I have said that before, that we can always run an old truck for another 10,000 miles. And we are doing, we've already done a lot of those, and we will continue doing that. Should we share resources? Maybe we should share resources with the system campuses. We are looking in those as well. Some functions like HR, some functions like legal. We are already sharing a lot of functions. But is there more to be able to harvest in those areas? So we are looking at anything and everything. But I want to be emphatic that there are areas that we need to invest if we want to be strategic. And that's what we are looking at.
Very good. Thank you, Chancellor. Question is about tuition. Will it go up this fall? What is the plan? What's happening with tuition?
So Andy, I'll take that one. Before all of this started, we had recommended to the president of the system that we would increase our tuition and fees by the rate of inflation, which is very small. It would be determined by whatever the actual CPI increase is for the calendar year. The president is currently considering that option and also the option of keeping our tuition and fees flat. We don't know that yet. That decision will be made probably in another month. But those are the two scenarios that are being considered at this time.
Well, let me, I think this is, this is a good time to mention that there will not be any merit increases across the campus this year. So any salary increase, that's a normal part, and is typically, like our CFO just mentioned, in par with the inflation rate. There will not be any salary increases this year across the campus.
This next question has to do with looking at the positives in this situation. What are some of the silver linings that may have resulted from this? They give a couple of examples, remote learning, for example, or some of the research on coronavirus that is underway at S&amp;T. So talk a little bit about what the silver linings might be.
Well, so I believe there are several. One is what we just mentioned. I like a quote from Milton Friedman, who said, "Nothing like a real crisis ensures change of behavior." And every campus, ourselves included, have been wanting to sharpen our online tools for the past several years. Well, we just did. And I believe that's one of the silver linings, where we have now robust online delivery technologies, methodologies, content, and so on, so forth. That alone will enable us to come up with new programs that can take advantage of mixed modes of online delivery on campus and identification of what courses are needed to be done on campus, like laboratories and senior projects and so on. Some of them are very difficult to do online, although we are, we are making every attempt, every effort that we can. That enables us to also take the university to the community. No matter what we do, there is a significant portion of our state students that are deserving and qualified to get an S&amp;T-level education. And if they are deserving and qualified, now we have the tools to take the campus and our programs to them. I believe that's a significant, really enhancement of our capabilities. And then I believe the other one is for us to learn to collaborate. We have been, it was, it was really learning by fire in not only doing teaching online, but also conducting research online. There was a question earlier that I think I should address it here. And the question was, will the thesis functions be delayed? And the answer is no, because we have enhanced our capabilities of online delivery, of, you know, collaborative paperwork publications, thesis, research, and so on, so forth. There've been many of that. And I honestly believe that there is another dimension, another, and I sense that. I get emails from our faculty or students, where the campus life was never as desirable as it is today. For years, there's been this question that whether the brick-and-mortar campuses are in the future. And I believe this experience proved that the sense of togetherness and community and collaborative approach to education, to learning, whether it be theoretical or experiential, or at any level, is not all possible online. And this was also proven, and I believe that's a silver lining, where people will value getting together and sort of transcending their own discipline boundaries to be able to address a difficult challenge. That's harder to do online than it is in a group setting. So I love the email that I received from one of our faculty members, who said, "Mo, I will never complain about the size of my office again. Just let me come in it." So that gives you a sense that people are desiring getting together again and for us to have a community of thoughtful people and the students and faculty interaction, and so on, so forth.
Thank you, Chancellor. Going to combine a few questions here related to HR issues, frankly. And the first one is, are layoffs possible? And tied to that is, when will decisions be made about layoffs or furloughs? And the other part of this question is, will there be early retirement options for eligible staff?
So to be candid, everything is possible. We, and we don't know what units are going to come up with what measures for their budget considerations, as I mentioned, 10%, 15%, 20%. If we can get by with 10%, then maybe very few position combinations. The later on situations, I mean, the hard one is 2021. We can manage the last three months of this year with the measures that I mentioned. But the difficult one is 2021 and beyond. And we need to have the contingencies for, what if the state support goes down by 10%, 15% for us? And that's why I believe our contingency plans should not be only focused on now and this particular situation, but the longer-term plan where the university needs to be in 20 years. Should we be so dependent on the fluctuation of any of our budgets? And the answer to the question, in all honesty, is everything is on the table. We don't know at what level until our contingency plannings are done. And then the answer to the question of the volunteer separation is that, of course, you know, if that question implies that we will pay people to separate and retire, given our budgetary situation, that will be very, very difficult. As you know, we are, we are doing everything that we can not to be in the red for the balance of this year and be prepared for the harder year next year. So it'll be difficult to come up with money to pay people to voluntarily separate. As I mentioned, I was delighted to see that one email from one senior faculty who's had 39 years of service on campus. And he said, "I wanted to work for another year, but given the situation, I will exercise my option of retiring early so the campus can hopefully benefit from my retirement."
Thank you, Chancellor. I think a couple of questions here for the provost. Specifically, this one has to do with the fourth session of summer, asking why was that decision made? And the other question has to do with the policy for faculty for proctoring on exams.
Sure. I'll start with the proctoring question first. Regarding exam and assessment proctoring, faculty have the option to use proctoring services that are made available on a system-wide basis, such as Proctorio. However, faculty are also encouraged to consider alternative assessment methods because students are often faced with significant technological challenges as place-bound learners. These would include lack of access to a webcam or spotty internet service, or frankly, lack of a private workspace in their homes. As far as the second question goes, the Summer Session 4. So this was imagined, well, Summer Session 4 is planned for July 20th through August 14th. And it complements three other summer sessions. These are the typical ones. So Summer Session 1 is an eight-week session. That is essentially the month of June and July. Summer Session 2 is a four-week session, essentially the month of June. And Summer Session 3 is a four-week session, essentially the month of July. And Summer Session 4 was added as an opportunity, pending circumstances that would make on-campus learning allowable. It was imagined as an opportunity for students to return to campus and resume face-to-face teaching, the opportunity to welcome students. And just a touch earlier, we know that many students have reached out saying they are incredibly enthusiastic about the possibility and premise of returning to campus and resuming on-campus learning. We also imagined that it may be a four-week opportunity for incoming students, particularly freshmen, transfers, to get a head start in certain critical general education courses. And so that's why we implemented this unique Summer Session 4, which again runs from July 20th through August 14th.
Very good. Thank you, Provost. Might just take a moment here to mention that we did receive a comment, an expression of gratitude to the university leadership for taking the initiative to begin the remote work for those staff who were available to, or able to work. work for those staff who were available to, or able to work remotely. So, I just wanted to share that with the group. That came through the Q and A as well. There's a question also, you mentioned, Chancellor, you mentioned the Minor Resilience Fund. The question has to do with any funds for staff who may have concerns about layoffs or, you know, other issues.
I think the Minor Resilience Fund, we can establish dimensions of that if the support that's coming from the ALAM is specified, that is for student support. Those funds are tied with our Student Emergency Fund. So, some of these funds come tagged with the note that says, "For Student Emergency Fund." But if there are general funds that come in, I believe we can discuss the option of providing assistance to staff that might be in need of assistance as well. Let me also, I just received a note from our Dean of Graduate Studies, Dr. Kostas Tsatsoulis, that says that arrangements have been made for the students who want to submit their thesis or papers as a paper copy. There is arrangements made for that as well. As you know, most of these submissions are done electronically, but if you are in a situation where you need to submit a paper because of the formatting and so on, so forth, contact, please contact Dr. Tsatsoulis, and he'll give you directions on how to submit your paperwork as well.
Very good. Question about filling positions. Will the CIO position be filled, given the current circumstances?
Many positions are going to be filled, but given the situation that we are in right now, we are reviewing every single one of our positions. I do want to say again that we are not shutting down recruitment as a whole, but I think a good expression for it is that, you know, we're not on a hiring freeze, but we can only ice fish, if you will. So, a lot of these positions will be filled ultimately. We need a CFO. I'm grateful to Cuba Plane, who's done a remarkable job, particularly given the circumstances that we are in right now. I don't want to be in her shoes, worried about every detail of every contractual agreement and how do we fulfill them, and how do we respond to, you know, yet another shortfall on the budget here and there and so on. But the answer is yes, the positions will be filled. It may not be now, but they ultimately will be filled.
Thank you. I think we have time maybe for this one last question before Chancellor, before you or the other panelists give final remarks. And the question has to do with comments you made earlier regarding the vision for Missouri S&amp;T. Question is, who's making the decisions about this vision, these new visions and modalities, and how can we participate?
Well, that's a great question. You can participate. You're more than welcome to participate. Once the broader strategic planning gets going, we will come up with means and methods for everybody to participate and provide commentary. We need your comments. We need your understanding of our situations. We need your understanding of the past activities and so on, so forth. You know, I read a lot of history and read the history of this campus, and you learn from the activities that went on here 100 years ago. I promise you, there were functions that happened here 100 years ago that are lessons learned even for today. So, the answer is yes, the decisions will be made collectively. We will bring our heads together, and we will discuss pros and cons, and we will include commentary, and I encourage you to look out for when we come to you with questions. Maybe it'll be a survey, and you will provide input. This is a wonderful question. I'm glad you asked it, and then we will. But the answer, of course, to us, we are committed to the collective governance of the campus. No one person is smart enough to be able to figure any of this stuff out. So, the decisions will be made collectively. Many of our colleagues are going to be involved. In fact, many of our, we will seek input from people who have domain knowledge outside of the campus as well. So, stay tuned.
Very good, Chancellor. The floor is yours for any final comments you might want to make, and any other panelists as well.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Thank you, everybody on this panel, and thank all of you for participating in this town hall meeting and for your contribution of any kind, your patience, your endurance, your support of any form. Frankly, it gets lonely from time to time when, you know, you have to make decisions, and all of us, on some of these questions. We don't have all the answers. We are constantly working to make sure that the answers that we provide are based on factual data and science and knowledge that we have today, and we seek input from everybody to make these decisions. And for those of you who have provided input, solicited or otherwise, we are grateful. Please continue doing that. Please exercise the hard-to-do but doable, you know, social distancing. I think this is a hint. It was on the table when we came here, hand sanitizers. I like this version, which is a hand sanitizer bottle on a keychain. So, do everything that you can to help the effort. Again, I will be the first to admit that we don't have all the answers. If you have knowledge of a situation, if you have data, particularly data, if you are aware of a better way of doing something, please share it with the rest of us. Please stay safe. Please stay tuned. We intend to do this every week, and if you have your questions not answered, please bring them back up again. We will do everything that we can to respond to them here, and if not, we will respond to them by email or social media or whatever else that's necessary. Thank you all very much. Please stay safe.